Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, first meeting of 2020. Yay, Happy New Year, Happy New Year to everybody.
Good morning, all.
Hey, I'm glad you're all here. And I would ask at this time for everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. If you do have something to say on a particular agenda item, please go to the podium, state your name and home address.
And we will have speaking opportunities for the proclamations as well?
Of course. So if the proclamations will have during, after I read those, time to make some comments on that. And if, I don't think we have any zoning cases or anything like that at this meeting, but in that case, you would have an opportunity as well to speak. So if there's anyone for public comments, now would be the time to go to the podium. Okay, thank you. We'll move to item number one on the agenda, which is our proclamations. And I'm going to start with the proclamation, January 2020, National Human Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas by presidential proclamation each January has been designated National Human Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month and whereas the issues of sex trafficking and labor trafficking are a violation of human rights, the hope of this proclamation is to raise awareness of this topic. And whereas the county of Dubuque wishes to acknowledge the following organizations for their work to combat human trafficking, Tri-State Coalition Against Human Trafficking and Set Free Dubuque. And whereas the United Nations Global Plan of Action has three pillars upon which it stands, protect, prevent, and prosecute. We invite all residents of Dubuque County to educate themselves on this issue and to support these three pillars to help eradicate the problem. And whereas, human trafficking is both a national and local issue. We invite all civic leaders and citizens to support the efforts of the Tri-State Coalition to train all local hotel motel staff in recognizing the signs of trafficking. And whereas, established to educate neighbors about the problem of human trafficking, the Tri-State Coalition Against Human Trafficking invites citizens to join them in viewing the movie I Am Still Here, showing trafficking in the United States. The movie will be shown at 10:00 AM on January 11th, 2020, which I believe is a Saturday morning, at the Grand Opera House. Proclamation adopted this second day of January 2020. Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, David J. Baker, Jay Wickham, and McDonough. So.
I will make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the proclamation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. I would ask if there's spokespersons from the groups, the Coalition Against Human Trafficking and Set Free Dubuque, if you'd like to go to the podium, make some comments, would be much appreciated.
And while you're doing that, I just, going to the podium, I know that unfortunately that is a conflict date for, at least for me, to see. I have seen the film I Am Still Here when it was at the River Museum a few years ago. But we are invited to participate in a legislative forum in Dyersville. So if I, to how the League of Women Voters invite us to participate in Dubuque, so I know I will be, it'll be a conflict with that 10 o'clock showing, but I'm seeing the advertising around town and I do hope we fill that to capacity.
... aware of the issue of human trafficking. So we're very pleased that you will issue this proclamation. This is our third year in a row and we have experienced through our booth at the county fair for four years and through all kinds of efforts to get the message out that human trafficking is, is an issue not only internationally, but in the U.S. and here in Dubuque. I think if you watch the headlines in the papers, often there's something indicating sexual abuse or something that leans toward human trafficking, you know, and we just, our purpose is to educate so that people recognize the signs of it. So we hope that you invite all your family and friends to come to this free film at the Grand Opera House. And we're fortunate to have that venue. It is free and the concession stand will be open. But the film is two hours. It's not easy to see. So we recommend older teenagers and up to come and certainly if anyone's a little younger to come with an adult. I would invite all the Coalition and Set Free members to stand so you were recognized. Okay, this is not all of us.
Thank you.
Well, a couple of months ago, I counted the group around the table, there were up 26.
Oh, that's awesome.
We meet every month, the first Tuesday night. And this started out almost six years ago with the Religious Sisters in Dubuque collaborating on this effort and concern. And our, our goal is to continue to invite non-members, non-sisters, and you know, recently about a third of our group is not sisters now. So we're passing on the torch and would love to partner with any other groups. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sister.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
I'm Sister Nancy Miller and I too am a part of a coalition and some other groups that have been working to eradicate human trafficking. And a part of that education is just to inform the public that girls and boys are trafficked usually between the ages of 11 and 13. And we know of those cases in this state and in this country. And so I think if we can educate and become informed, because perhaps we have grandchildren those ages and that's pretty startling facts, and that educating our teenagers is some of our best defense. Also, I'm not real familiar with, in terms of how county supervisors, in terms of funding, but I would just encourage you, oftentimes there's good proclamations and legislation that is passed towards addressing it, but lots of times when it comes to funding our law enforcement in order to investigate those cases, that that lacks. So I would just really encourage you to use whatever your offices and just to educate to really promote the funding so that really the officers and the county attorneys can do the investigation so that we can get the buyers and all those others who are doing this act off the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Sister.
Sister, we have the sheriff and our county attorney both present right here, so hearing your remarks, so.
And I know from my past experience, Sheriff Kennedy has been a guest at these meetings, a participant in the meetings. I don't know if CJ has yet, but.
Chief Dollsing certainly has been as well.
Yeah, so I think that what, you know, a lot of people don't know is the work that has been done to train hotel motel workers, because they're probably the most likely to be able to identify that if they have the proper training. Another group, when I was in my previous career with the Teamsters Union, is some of the national trucking companies have some training, but it could probably be improved on in some areas. But that's another case where there's people all over that if they're trained for what to look for, so that might be another avenue that, you know, can be explored. But I know with the Homeland Security, for example, UPS was involved in training their folks to look for abandoned vehicles and that type of thing, but they also had some initiatives in the area of human trafficking, so. All right, well, thank you so much. And we do have another proclamation and we'll go into. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes, and maybe we'll get some.
A photo, yeah.
Pictures.
The two representatives that spoke with the chair.
Yes, I'd like to have whoever wants to come forward to accept the proclamation. And also then we can get some photos. Would you like to come up? Whoever wants to come up, come on up.
The whole group, we've done group pictures up here before, accepting the proclamation. Yep, come on up to the bench if you want, come on up around here, on these sides here. We'll get you up here and with the flags and group. Yes, Sister, come on up, come on up here, we'll take a picture with the supervisors. Doing well, Happy New Year. How are you?
I'm good.
Come on, you'll be in the middle there. You bet, thank you. Yes. Thanks for being here. Yes, of course. At the grand, that's awesome. Hopefully you're getting some. Come on in, I'll stand behind you here, I'll have your back. Thank you. All right, who's orchestrating the pictures?
Let's have somebody in the middle hold the proclamation up.
Get us all in.
We're going to have one more comment on work with the school system.
They all came back, so it's a little, little busy, but.
And I want to go back. That's okay. All right, thank you. We have one more comment from the podium regarding the work with the school district. Sister's going to make a. Okay, Sister, you wanted to talk about the work the Coalition is doing with the schools.
Right, I'm Sister Patricia Conlon with the Tri-State Coalition. I just want to mention that in 2016, as Ann mentioned, we had the film I Am Still Here at the River Museum, and that's because the mine frame closed that morning. Went to the River Museum, we turned away over 200 people that night. They've been saying, bring it back. So we are back, but with a new focus, we learned at that meeting that the parents said, we want this film shown to our children. That's what we're doing. So right now, through the funding of the 100 good women who carry Dubuque, thank God, we have the funding to bring this film and also to bring education against, the awareness against human trafficking into the Dubuque Community School System and into the Holy Family System. Right now, we've interviewed with the counselors and the principals of the Dubuque Community School System, and so we're beginning to start that program with Shirley Horstman in the planning with me, beginning this week. So I want you to know that it affects all people, parents, CEOs, children, nobody is exempt from human trafficking. So we'll be presenting with the parents, the staff, and the children together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sister. Okay, we have another proclamation. Mary was kind enough to give me the large print edition. I will read the proclamation into the record. It's Dubuque County 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration Proclamation. Whereas in 1848, people gathered together in Seneca Falls, New York, and cited the unfairness of depriving women of the right to vote. And whereas, the fight for women's suffrage from the First Women's Rights Convention to enfranchisement lasted more than 72 years, with women from all walks of life, political views, and demographic backgrounds asking for the right to voice their opinions at the polls. And whereas, Iowa women by the thousands advocated for the right to vote and suffragists nationwide turned to public education and persuasion. They held conferences, campaigned, lobbied, marched, pleaded, petitioned, and suffered public disdain, violent opposition, and prison. And whereas, suffragists pushed for a single constitutional amendment granting female suffrage on the federal level dubbed the Susan B. Anthony Amendment. And whereas, Carrie Chapman Cat led the national movement, meeting with President Woodrow Wilson to secure his support for suffrage in light of women's contributions during World War I. And whereas, it took male allies to support women in their endeavor to vote, for it was sons, husbands, and fathers who ultimately heard the calls of women. And the House of Representatives took a historic vote on May 21, 1919, followed by the Senate on June 4, 1919, and three-fourths of the states needed to ratify the 19th Amendment. And whereas Iowa was the 10th state to ratify the 19th Amendment on July 2, 1919, Tennessee was the 36th state to ratify the 19th Amendment, making it law of the land on August 26, 1920, whereby millions of women were enfranchised. And whereas, the introduction, passage, and ultimate ratification of the 19th Amendment were the culmination of decades of work and struggle by advocates for the rights of women across the United States. And whereas, the ratification of the 19th Amendment ensured women could more fully participate in our democracy and fundamentally change the role of women in civic, in the civic life of our nation. And whereas, most of the women who began asking for the right to vote never lived to see the enfranchisement of women. And whereas, the daughters, granddaughters, and great-granddaughters of the women who fought so hard to vote have been making their voices heard at the polls for nearly 100 years. And whereas, women are running for office in unprecedented numbers. Many current politicians, both male and female, remember that they follow in the footsteps of these great suffragists. And whereas, the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment represents a historical milestone to be lauded and celebrated. Now therefore, be it resolved, Dubuque County commemorates the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the 19th Amendment, providing for women's suffrage to the Constitution of the United States. Honors the role of the ratification of the 19th Amendment in further promoting the core values of our democracy as promised by the Constitution of the United States. Reaffirms the opportunity for people in the United States to learn about and commemorate the efforts of the women's suffrage movement and the role of women in our democracy. And reaffirms the desire of Dubuque County citizens to continue strengthening democratic participation and to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the 19th Amendment. Therefore, citizens of Dubuque County shall enjoy the freedom of voter participation, continue to fight for voting rights for all citizens, celebrates this important milestone by proclaiming calendar year 2020 to be the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration. Proclamation adopted this second day of January 2020. Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, David J. Baker, Jay Wickham, and McDonough.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation.
And I will second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, under discussion. I would say that we need only to look around this room and, and, and I'm, I, thank you. And I specifically want to point out elected officials who are in the room are County Auditor Denise Dolan. State Senator Pam Yocum. And State Representative Lindsey James. And Dubuque County Supervisor Ann McDonough. And obviously, there's, there's more, I'm identifying those who are in the room. So, so thank you, ladies, for not only your service, but many times and many times your mentorship and guidance and certainly my colleague, Ann McDonough, enjoy working with Ann, so. So anyway, is there anyone to speak on this proclamation?
You have a motion and a second, and you still want your in discussion?
Okay, yep. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Is there anyone that would like, thanks Jay, like to speak on the proclamation? Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Tam Parentocell and I am currently the president of the local chapter of the League of Women Voters. And the League of Women Voters was founded on February 14, 1920, by Carrie Chapman Cat. And as the proclamation says, it was a hard-won freedom to vote. And so voting is very precious to the League of Women Voters and we try to be as active as we can to promote voting, voter registration, voting rights as much as we can. The other line mentions that Iowa was the 10th state to ratify the 19th Amendment, and I think we should be proud of that. The State League of Women Voters is planning several events this year. We have a website called Hard One, But Not Done, and so I would encourage you to look at that and, and see if there's something of interest to attend, and thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and receive the proclamation? Come on around and we'll get a.
We'll get another shot there.
Yes, and how about the elected officials? Thank you.
Get to hold the proclamation properly outside.
I think we should get the roses between the two thorns.
That sounds good to me.
Pam, do you want to flip down my computer screen there?
Oh, sure.
Let's do another one there, okay.
Okay.
I will second that motion. Motion to recess for five minutes. Spend seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, five-minute recess. And the next item on the agenda is the item number two on the agenda, which is approval of minutes of meeting of December 9, 11, 16, 19, and 20, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as distributed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right, we have no consent items and no procurement procedures. Oh, you're right.
Unusual.
Okay.
I will make a motion to elect supervisor Baker to serve as our chair.
Make a second.
Motion made and seconded that I serve as chair for 2020. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, do we want to go into our?
We still need the vice chair.
Oh, vice chair, all right. I, I'll make a motion to have Supervisor Wickham continue to serve as vice chair for 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? And just under discussion, we've, I think, been looking at doing two years, they used to do it every year, but with projects carrying over, I think the idea is to do it for two years, so. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right, back to the regular agenda now. Okay, no consent items, under procurement procedures, we do have a proof of publication for the courthouse elevator project. And so I need the proof, approval for the proof of publication.
Make a motion to approve the proof of publication.
And I will second that.
Okay. Well, then these are in the wrong.
So 4B is next.
Before A was for the proof of publication, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Right, okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Then we have, under procurement procedures, 4B receipt of bids, fire alarm system for courthouse and old jail.
Do we have?
Is Chris here?
Jason.
Oh, Jason's here, come on up, Jason. You're in the hot seat.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you as well. Good morning.
How many bids do we have? Oh, just one, okay. That was anticipated, or?
No, there was a lot of companies that actually showed up, there was three, two or three contractors from Dubuque.
Could you introduce yourself for the public?
I'm Jason Riker, I'm lead maintenance Dubuque County. There was a couple of local companies representative and a few of the fire alarm distributors from the area represented that day.
What's the need for this project?
Oh, the system we have currently is very antiquated. It doesn't allow the firemen to correctly identify where a problem is coming from or if there was a signal in the building, it just gives a general area, which makes it troublesome because it's such a big building, you know? And it's hard to get parts for the current system that we do have, and it doesn't quite come to code, so.
Thank you.
This deals with the modernization of the elevator system.
Yeah.
This is fire alarm. Yeah, the proof of publication was for the elevator. The bids are for the fire alarm system. So we have a 150-year-old building and it's almost a never-ending maintenance issues on it. We're trying to be caught up on it, but as much as, in as much as that is possible.
Right.
We, last year did the. We, last year, did the exterior, and I think there'll be other things coming down the line, such as the elevator, so.
And do we have a bid?
Yes, I'll read the bid in. The first and only bid we have is from Westfall and Company out of Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of $242,100. And it's $242,100.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the bids and report back to Maintenance Administration for their recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried, three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, under item five, public hearings, we have proof of publication for public hearing for the elevator modernization. So, was that on their, was that a redundancy on the agenda?
No, it was just on the agenda. But there's already a motion made for it.
Okay.
Motion seconded and a vote, right? So, yeah, we're complete.
So, we're, we'll go to five, 5B. So, we have 5B. We'll open the public hearing. We have the courthouse elevator modernization plans and specifications. And then, we have a resolution to approve the plans and specifications for the courthouse elevator modernization. We want to have a motion to open up.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Okay, motion made and seconded to open the public hearing on this courthouse elevator modernization plans and specifications project. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried, three to zero. So, is there anyone here to speak on the public hearing, during the public hearing, on the courthouse elevator project? Anyone to speak?
If Dawn or Jason would like to give us an overview again.
Jason, do you want to, any comments on this?
Just a brief, we had a work session with the board, with you, a few months ago. There's been several instances in the last year where the elevator has shut down, and unfortunately, with, with people in it at times. So, we have been reviewing, making upgrades to this. And when we first looked at it, we thought it would be a much more extensive modernization. When we brought contractors in, though, they've informed us that we only have to redo the panel. And so, it's a lot of electrical. So, from going from six weeks to having to be down, we're going to two to three days, and we're hoping to coordinate that with a holiday weekend as well, so that the, one of the requirements in this plan is that they would do it over a holiday weekend, so when they bid that. So, this isn't, this is not in this year's budget. So, that will have to be a discussion point once we receive the bids and look to our budget director to, to walk us through that as well.
Okay.
But very good news related to the, the timing and the disruption within the courthouse, it sounds like.
Yes, very much so. It's, it looked like they were gonna change a lot of the other stuff out, but it's just the controls that need to be updated.
Yeah, in our work session, the discussion was, we may have to change the car itself. And so, this is good news.
Yes, very good.
Okay, and we have at least one person in the room that could give direct testimony about getting trapped in the elevator, our budget director, Stella Rundy. Stella, any comments? Get her, besides get her done?
Support everything.
All right, okay. Is there anyone else to speak?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution related to the plans and specifications of the courthouse elevator.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. Okay. All right, we have, under number six, approval of plats, there are none for this meeting. Under action items, this is item seven on the agenda, action items. The board may approve, deny, or table any action item. 7A is a resolution regarding appointments of deputies, assistants, and clerks. And we have, this is 7A. We have Sunny Crest Manor. We have 1, 2, 3, 4 positions. We have county attorney, victim witness coordinator position, county attorney clerk four, and roads maintenance worker one. Is there any discussion on any of those? I guess, Anthony, on the maintenance worker one, is this the position that somebody we offered and they turned it down? Did we go then to the next candidate? Okay, and has this person accepted the position, to our knowledge? Okay.
Get your mic on, otherwise the?
He has accepted it. So, yeah, the, the first individual just declined for various reasons, and so, we moved on to our second candidate.
So, those familiar with the construction industry, there's a term called dragging up. If you get a better job offer, you might take it. It's called dragging up. In this case, I think the, from what I heard, the other employer upped the ante, and the person decided not to come with us. So, that's, that happens. So, they decided not to drag up, so. All right, and then?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second and some discussion.
Okay, open for discussion.
The date that it's approved is the date that the board approved the position itself, is that correct?
Yes, that's the day that you approved the requisition.
I think it's important, then, to note that the Sunny Crest RN position was approved in June, and that it is, that search continues to be difficult. But I think it's exciting that we have located an RN willing to do, to come to us. I think that's maybe some evidence that what we're trying to install there with some changes is having effect. So, I'm delighted to see that that, that is there as well. And I know we have the county attorney here with us. One of the positions is for a victim witness coordinator. Is this the second position in, in your office for victim witness coordinator, or is this the only?
No.
Right, so I, I think it's important, I thank you for filling the second position. I think it's important to, to continue to be, you know, to stress that it's important to have that position be filled as victim witness coordinator. It helps law enforcement move more orderly, but it also makes a big difference, I think, in my experience doing criminal law many years ago, to have a person who's attentive to what a victim might be experiencing, that helps as well. So, I'm, I think it's important that we note that our county has two full-time positions to do that work, so.
Kind of following up on Ann's, CJ, this, this position will be a victim witness coordinator position, not simply a clerical position, is that correct?
Right, so it's, it's actually, a position that is established by code.
Okay.
Chapter 915 of the Iowa Code, which, and so, every county does it a little differently, all the way from, you know, real small counties that have one county attorney and one, like, secretary, to others that have multiples, and that they, you know, and within that, you know, there's, I think, kind of a differentiation of duties and things, depending upon the county attorney's position on things, so, yes, but there are two.
Okay.
And there has been for, really, I don't know, 20-plus years, I would have to guess. Would you guess, Ann? I mean?
I, I, I'm familiar with that from the, being the former organ unit representative.
Would you say 20-plus years?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think so, so.
Yeah, and I can go back that far. And then, I just had a question for our HR Director, Dawn Sherman. In, in all of these cases, do you believe that the most competent person for these positions has been selected?
I do. All of them have gone through an application, recruitment, and interview process. I know for the, the position you were just speaking of, the victim witness coordinator, there were over 22 interviews conducted for that position by the county attorney's office. So, yes, I would recommend approval of all of these.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried, three to zero. Thank you. Okay, next up is 7B, and this is a tax abatement issue. There's a memo from Eric Stearman, and then, the resolution, it looks like it involves abating $498 from the tax records. It looks like this one is from the, regarding the city of Dubuque purchasing the old ABC Building supply across from Crestlands Bowling Center, and they have filed for exemption for 2019 to exempt them for one half-year from 2018 taxes. And then, the Stone Hill Franciscan Services had three parcels donated to them from Callahan Construction. This abatement is a partial for the 2018 tax year, and we'll see them again on the abatement for next year, as that exemption was not filed within the filing deadline for the 2019 tax year. Again, that's on the recommendation, the memorandum from Eric Stearman. And the first parcel, the abatement, was $4,715, and the second one that I, the Franciscans was $498, so.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried, three to nothing. Okay, next resolution, 7C, naming the official newspapers for Dubuque County for 2020. That would be the Dubuque Telegraph Herald, the Dyersville Commercial, and the Cascade Pioneer Advertiser. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the three county newspapers for 2020. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. Okay, 7D, it's a resolution to approve plans and specifications to follow Iowa Department of Transportation standards. Anthony, you have any comment on this resolution? I think we have a number of resolutions regarding the county engineer, if you wanna, do you want to address each one, or kind of summarize the, in one fell swoop?
Yeah, this is, these resolutions have been ongoing for, you know, a number of years well before I was here, specifically to this one, that will, we will follow Iowa DOT plans or specifications with all of our projects. I don't see any problem with that, we do that anyways. And for the, for the remainder of those, they're just specific to some of my duties that I do, as far as, you know, closing roads, or giving single-trip permits, moving permits, utility permits, dust control permits, issuance of weight restrictions on bridges, pretty, pretty standard stuff, you know, most counties do these kinds of things.
Okay.
Better you than me. So, I will make a motion to approve the resolution for the specific, we'll start with 7D, the plans and specifications for the Iowa DOT.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in 7D, under discussion. Anthony, did they, have they followed through with that change on the electronic signing, where we can designate, or is that still in the works?
So, what, what they're looking at doing is, they're, they're gonna allow the supervisors to designate somebody to sign for them on each one of these contracts. Now, it's, it's not an annual, you know, resolution that we can pass, you have to do it specifically for each contract. So, one thing we could do is, when you approve the plans and specifications for our DOT let projects, we could have a resolution that goes along with it, that you allow a designate to sign, sign off in the Doc Express program.
Okay.
You know, you think about that, it could be either Dawn, Dawn or myself, you know, that's, that's something that could help kind of expedite the process when we deal with these contracts.
And I, I just wanted to get that out in a public discussion here, so. All right, motion was made and seconded to approve the resolution in 7D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right, 7E, we have a resolution, approve annual resolutions relating to the duties of the county engineer. One, execution of certificate of completion. Two, issuance of weight restrictions. Three, road closures. Four, execution of moving permits. Five, execution of utility permits. Six, execution of dust control permits.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. We have numerous resolutions. Can we, do we do each one individually? All right, so.
Can I make a motion to do all of them?
He, so, 7E1, motion was made and seconded for 7E1. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the issuance of weight restrictions.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded for 7E2. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for road closures.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution for 7E3. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion to approve the resolution for the execution of moving permits.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in 7E4. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'll make a motion to approve the execution of utility permits resolution.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in 7E5. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried.
Make a motion to approve the resolution in E6, execution of dust control permits.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried, three to zero. All right, 7F is a resolution, approve the temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on June 27, 2020, for the annual Run for Troops race. They're right on top of it.
I think we have people here, they might want to speak.
Okay, do we have someone to speak on this resolution?
Are you here for?
My name's Mike Hodge, I represent Run for Troops. Basically, here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the closures. We've worked with Anthony before on it, so he's pretty clear as to what we're asking for. Just wanted to make one comment, working with Anthony, and actually, the sheriff's department and local EMS, we couldn't, this event wouldn't go as smoothly as it does without the cooperation that we have from a lot of groups, so we appreciate the help.
It's great to know.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for you and Tim and all the volunteers that make this thing happen. Can you, I know you've expanded the different races, you have different races now, and so how many people will you have, estimated?
We're, we're, we actually have to cap it, which is a good problem with, with entries, so we'll be at about 1,500, and that'll represent a full-length marathon, which is 26 miles, a half marathon, and then, a team relay that consists of six members per team, and then, they'll pass, they'll pass a flag at various checkpoints, so. And it'll be a start and stop in Dubuque. It used to be a point-to-point, Dyersville to Dubuque. Last year, we made the change where it starts in Dubuque and goes out, and then comes back, so it, it worked much better last year, we thought. There was a lot of, the participants were happy, it just seemed like everything flowed a lot better by changing the course, so. We're planning on staying there, but these, these road closures are, are critical, just for safety. There's a lot of people running out across a lot of the roads where, where the trail will cross a county road, and we do have volunteers at every road crossing, but there's just a couple that are really hard to manage. But there's just a couple that are really hard to manage, and we have them listed here that keep our participants safe and traffic flowing in the right direction, so.
I don't know if you'd get out of, I'm sorry, go ahead, Anthony.
I can see that in your application as well, that you're very committed to a professional event. The logistics that you set forth in your application, I appreciated seeing all of that depth. So, you know, I'm certainly in favor and would support this request.
My wife ran into her first and only marathon, well, was Run for the Troops a few years ago. And she completed it, and yeah, enjoyed every minute of it.
Because that's, for your first marathon, that's not easy because it's so hot in June. We deal with the heat, and there's a lot of people that say it's gonna be my first one. And we're like, maybe you should do one in the fall or the early summer. You made it, and that's great, so we're proud of you.
She finished it and literally took two Advils, laid down for a couple hours, and then was ready to go. So, strong woman.
Congratulations, that's great. Again, thank you so much for your help countywide, it's just incredible.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution under discussion. Anthony, will you be running this year? That's what I thought. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried, three to zero, and thank you again. Yep. All right. Next item is seven G, resolution to approve the purchase of replacement Dodge Durangle Pursuit Vehicle for the sheriff's department. This was a, apparently we had a vehicle involved in an accident. Sheriff Kennedy and Chief Deputy Reniker, do you wanna come forward?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you as well.
Happy New Year.
Christmas was, or hoped they got what they wanted, didn't they?
So, we're still here.
If that's what I was looking for, I did.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a vehicle that was involved in a, actually two accidents in one week. Deer hit it and then was involved in an accident later the same week. So, it was totaled out.
The same car? Got hit by deer and then got another accident?
Thankfully, the same car.
There you go.
So, we weren't down two vehicles. But we, we obviously need a car right away. We had to go, we talked to Don about it. She said if we went with state bid, that we could forego the RFP, a standard RFP procedure. The state bid is out of Stew Hansen, is out of Des Moines, Stew Hansen, right, Stew. Yeah, Stew Hansen. Galena Chrysler had a pursuit rated vehicle on the lot that we were looking for. They agreed to match state bid. And so, if we get this, we can have this car as soon as we get the check. And we can get it outfitted and get it in service.
Okay. The only question I had on it was, did we give Dubuque County businesses the same opportunity under the state bid? In other words, did we check to see if they had a vehicle available?
They don't have them on the lot, they don't stock them. I know Galena Chrysler, they sell a lot of pursuit rated vehicles locally, no one does that.
Okay. That answered my question. Thank you. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the resolution, approving the purchase of a replacement vehicle.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item eight, communications. We have a proof of publication for zoning case. Case ZC number eleven dash twenty-nine dash nineteen, Kenneth and Darla Hush, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential. That was a proof of publication.
I will make a motion to receive and file the proof of publication.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then we have, under eight B, we have a damage claim. And this would normally be referred, or I guess received and filed and referred to Stella. I did have a question. Can somebody give me an explanation of what happened? I see a note that says we're responsible, but I didn't really get a lot of the details of what happened.
Okay. I thought there was a better explanation. Well, we were doing some tree trimming close to a building, and there was a power line that was going to the building itself. And I guess a branch swung the wrong direction and hit the power line and made the disconnect there. And so, there was some cost in reconnecting. It was our fault, you know, so.
Okay. So, the branch fell and took the wire down?
Yep.
Okay. All right. That's all I needed to hear. All right.
Make a motion to receive and file the damage claim and refer it, I believe, to the budget director, Stella, for processing.
I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. Eight C, annual manure management plans. We have three, Knuth Home Farm, number six-four-six-zero-zero. Scott Nepper, number seven-zero-six-nine-six. And Ducheneur Dairy, number six-three-four-four-four. Those are the MMPs.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to receive and file. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. All right. Appointments.
Sheriff and the chair, would it be possible to take the committee appointments, the annual appointments, after we take the appointments? I think we have members of the Board of Health here.
I think that makes sense.
That'd be fine.
I would support that.
Okay. We'll move ahead then to, it would be nine, item nine, two, approval of appointments. And so, we have EMS Advisory Board appointment.
Make a motion to approve the application to the EMS Advisory Board of Don Neenan.
The Dan's? Yeah. It's hard to say. Dan Neenan.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. I will second that.
Dan's the training guy from NICC, right?
Correct.
And he's currently on this board.
I believe so.
I believe his.
I know he's on many of the EMS and fire board, and is active throughout that.
Right. In his application, he says he's been on the board for some time. So, motion was made and seconded to approve his appointment, Dan Neenan, to the EMS Advisory Board. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried. All right. Then we have, under nine, two B, which would be the Board of Health. So, Patrice, did you wanna come forward and chairperson, Beshen? You guys wanna come forward?
Diane's also here.
Diane, do you wanna, anybody who's on the board, come forward, please.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Hi, Diane. Okay. So, we have two applicants, and I think we did, we have, I believe, eight on the board right now.
We currently have eight, that's right.
And I think in previous, previous action, our, the Board of Supervisors has said we would go to a maximum of nine, but I think we would rely on the Board of Health to tell us that's where they wanted to go. So, I assume that's why we're here. And we have, it looks like two very qualified applicants for that position.
We also have an email from Diane Freiberger, I think, saying that you're gonna be discussing this maybe at a meeting in next month in February.
Our current bylaws do say that we can have from five to nine. We, we made a request earlier to have that number tailored back a little bit. But, you know, we had planned on discussing it at our December meeting. However, we decided that we would, we were at eight, and we would, we would leave it at that. The issue of a ninth candidate came up probably in early December.
Okay.
And I guess, from what we had talked about, we were, we were going to put it on the agenda for December, but because of moving to eight, we decided to take it off the table. Now, we've got nine, or potentially nine. I guess it's in our bylaws, so I guess it's really up to the Board of Supervisors if they want to fill that ninth position. My only request is that we make sure we've got someone who has the entire breadth of the Board of Health responsibilities in mind.
And that was a kind of a question that I actually had, looking at both of these applications. I did talk to Susie Stroud. I did reach out to her to talk about her. Her original application is nearly a year old. She is still interested, but she asked some questions about when does the board meet? And I suspect that we might have to have that be, you know, perhaps both of these candidates should be, perhaps addressed by you, Patrice, in terms of, you know, I know that it's the difficulty in reaching your quorum. And so, finding the candidate who can meet the meeting schedule that you have maybe is an important criteria. I know you have, you know, meetings that are scheduled rather quickly. So, I don't know if anyone has addressed that with either of the candidates. I'm telling you that I think Susie has some questions. She is, has interesting background, delighted to serve, still very interested. So, and I don't know where we are with, you know, gender balance on the board as well. That would be a consideration, so.
Today, today we're at four male and four female.
Okay. So, then the only other question, I guess, is you would need to tell, I think, I'd like you to tell me at least, does your board wish to address this as itself first? Or, you know, I feel kind of like we're off the rails. You're on one timeline and we're on another, and we just seem to keep having this happen. So, you know, I don't know if your board has consensus that it's okay, whatever we do, or if you'd like to have a chance to have some discussion at the board level and then maybe even make a recommendation after visiting with both candidates. Susie's will expire. It's only valid for a year. You'll need to visit with her if she wants to, you know, reapply.
Can I make a comment, Tom?
Sure.
Thank you. We changed the bylaws, I apologize, I don't have much of a voice. I believe we voted on them November of 2018 to be a minimum of five, a maximum of nine. So, at that point, I felt like we were saying as a board, you know, we're good with any number that fits in there, and it's up to the supervisors. So, once we were at eight, we need five for a quorum. So, adding another person to go to nine is not gonna affect our quorum at all. So, I would encourage you to fill the spot because I think the more people that can give their input, the better. It's, since we're at eight, it's not, I don't see any reason not to fill it, you know? There's no negative to filling it at this point, especially if we have good applicants right now.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think we have two real good applicants, and you have volunteers that wanna serve on the board. And we've kinda gone through the bylaws, and that was one of my questions, is how many on the board? And what did we, what did we decide on a year or so ago? And so, I feel it's a responsibility of the Board of Supervisors to make those appointments. I wouldn't wanna necessarily, whether it's Conservation or your board or a variety of other boards, have the director or the individual board make those determinations. As citizens, you're always welcome to make your recommendations and to certainly, you know, contact us related to those people. But I think the Board of Supervisors should make the decision. And I think we have, from what it appears, I don't know either candidate real well, but they're both in the medical community, and would probably be both be very fine candidates on this board. So, I would encourage the decision today.
Okay. And that's my thoughts, where I just wanted to hear from the Board of Health that you indeed do want to fill it. Now, it certainly makes sense to go from eight to nine because that'll actually help with filling the quorum.
Are you in agreement then as well, Patrice, as the director?
Yes. I am. We can work with anyone. Could I just add, we have to have a physician on the board, which we do for Dr. Jill Powers. But I do know that when, we did have Dr. Fairley, and he left, we did not really struggle, but we did have some difficulty trying to find a physician to serve. So, I would be fine with either candidate, but to have another physician, have an interest, I think that's a very good thing, so. I mean, but we'll work with anyone.
I can support either decision, yeah. I know there's a mixed feeling on the board, but I don't think it needs to be tabled until our February meeting.
Perfect. And in terms of the physician, I think that is an advantage as well. I don't know that they can always make meetings.
Right.
And do you work with Dr. Conneru right now? Is he on the, he's not on our community-wide or county-wide?
No.
China hip?
Correct. No. Nope. No. But I do know of him, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
No, I don't know him personally.
May I ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm confused with the physician position. That's one in code that says it is either a male or a female. But does the gender count then in the count, or is it taken out?
Ask that one more time, sorry.
So, the physician position, it's mandated, and it can be either male or female. It usually, it doesn't, when you come to that position, it doesn't affect the count. So, is it considered in the count? I'm just wondering if we have two physicians, are they both designated as the physician? How, I just, I'm just curious, because that had come up. Somebody had asked me that.
Specific quote.
I don't know who's lucky enough to have two physicians, honestly, probably, on a board. Okay. I would just hate to make a decision.
That was a question, right?
Yeah.
If we have, we're required to have one. If we have two, does that go towards the gender balance? And I think the answer is yes. It goes by the overall number.
Okay. And we're okay either way. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion to appoint Bobby Canaro, Dr. Bobby Canaro, to the Board of Health.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Dr. Bobby Canaro to the Board of Health. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Carried, three to zero. Thank you. Thank you all for your service.
Your work, appreciate it. See you at budgets.
Okay. Then we have, might as well stay under item nine, two, C, representative of the Build Grant Committee. Anthony, I think we'll refer to you on this.
Sure. Well, what we have to do here is with the, the build grant that we received, we're gonna be going through a process of consultant selection to start the design process. And we're gonna need at least five members on this committee to help select the consultant. This is a federal aid process that we have to follow. We can only have two Dubuque County representatives. And we have to have two professional engineers on the committee. Those are the, those are pretty much the restrictions. And that, you can actually expand beyond five if you'd like. I would advise that a supervisor is one of the representatives. So, that's pretty much the starting point here.
What do we need again? Sorry.
You need at least five members.
Five, okay. So, we have to point five.
Yep.
And you need two PEs.
Two PEs. And only two of the members can be county representatives or county, you know, related.
Employees, is that fair to say, or what do you?
Well, I think it's employees or related officials.
We could pay for this. We'll leave it or not.
I think we're talking, you would be, would you be one county representative?
Definitely. And I would be one of your PEs as well, so.
Yeah. And then one supervisor.
Yes.
That's really the issue for us today. Now, have we, do you have any thoughts on the others?
Well, the, you know, we have to grab another PE, and that's, that can be difficult to achieve. You know, certainly the city of Dubuque has several on staff that they would be, you know, a group we'd wanna take a look at.
Why not Russell?
He'd be a third county representative then.
Who would, so you're one.
Yep.
Russell might be two. Who would be three?
Supervisor.
And that's desired, thought about, mandated?
Well, I mean, the supervisor doesn't necessarily have to be a representative. If you guys don't wanna be involved with the voting of the consultant selection process, now you can still be there, you just wouldn't be a voting member of it.
And we'd still approve the contracts and stuff like that, and the payments and everything else that we normally do. My thought is, you know, we're very fortunate to have two PEs. Why not use them? That's. That's my thought, but, you know, if this, if this would distract, you know, Russell from other responsibilities, that would be, that would influence me, but.
No, I don't think so. I would still like one of you guys to be there at the meetings. I, you know, we're going to probably have a series of meetings beyond also the consultant selection process, and I would like at least one board representative to be at these meetings. So, be thinking about who you'd want to have there for that.
By having a PE from the city of Dubuque, does that, in any way, help coordinate the communication about the build grant? Would it be easier to operate if you had an engineer from the city and an engineer from the county?
It gives a different perspective, different point of view, I guess, than just being strictly county-related. It does give you that sort of city perspective, another, you know, Russell and I are in dialogue all the time, so we're going to be a lot alike in our thinking. You might have a different thought process with a different professional engineer on it, from a different entity, jurisdiction.
I'm just thinking about, whenever you're deciding, you're going to have to communicate to the city, and then that's an extra step.
Yeah.
If the city is, they are present with you, they're aware of the need to make a decision in what you're also deciding. It seems like there's less likelihood to leave somebody out of the loop, and, and you're going to be talking to Russell regardless, his input will be happening.
Yeah.
So, having someone from the city, I think, somewhat of a benefit. They're the major partner in this grant, whether it's a county grant or a city grant, they're certainly a major benefactor of what we're going to do here. Seems important to me.
The main role is for to consult, to pick the consulting.
Pick the consulting, yes.
So, to, is that a recommendation, or do you know, DOT is at a final?
It's a recommendation to the supervisors to approve.
So, it's recommendation back to us?
Yes.
And, you know, you'll still have many other engineering meetings, many other people involved, whether from the private sector with John Deere, whether from the public, and the public hearings. You know, I, I, I just, you know, I'm open to that. So, today, were we trying to carve out all five?
Yes.
Okay. And so, then, once we, once we get with the supervisor, who, the other two would be people from the public? Do we have a recommendation? I have a feeling we're going to struggle to just get five names right now, unless you know all five, so maybe we can come back to this. I, that's, so who would be the other two?
Yeah.
Let's assume we have, let's say we have two engineers, and we've got a supervisor. Who's the other two? We just, we won't be able to finish the process today, anyway, right?
You know, we talked about maybe making, maybe somebody from like the Chamber or Economic Development, could be one representative.
So, so we'd make, we would just, you know, assume they would accept, but we'd just say, somebody from the Chamber Board, or somebody from Travel Dubuque Board, or something like that. So, so you'd have a better shot of somebody, a board member raising their hand. I don't feel comfortable telling one specific person you're going to be on this committee.
Yeah, and today, we're probably not going to finalize this, because we need to go out and ask these people if they're willing to be a part of it.
And maybe that's what I'm getting at. Maybe we can come back with the document, and say, here's kind of the opportunities, and here's.
Who would you like to go for? I mean, what, this is, I guess, we've got, put this on the agenda to be thinking about what direction we want to be pointing towards.
Mine would be, you know, our two PEs. That would be my thought, and then, past that, I don't know if we need a Board of Supervisors. We're going to be involved in the process, we're going to be approving other documents, I'm not against that. Past that, it's, you know, people that would be interested and active, and one of those might be a John Deere representative. A lot of this project started with, you know, their application and need. So, that'd be my two cents.
I'm going to, I guess, on that, on that, I kind of think we should stay away from John Deere, and have more impartial folks involved. That's my thought. I was thinking like a Danny McDonald from GDDC, or some, or a representative from that organization, Rick Dickinson, Danny McDonald, someone like that.
I was actually thinking like the Realtors Association. Let's see if we can find a woman, maybe not all dark suits. Let's see if we can find someone who's female, who might have an interest in being, you know, develop our board, and also capable of understanding, you know, construction matters.
I think a Conservation Board member could be another person, even though it's, it's a.
A $500,000 is in trails for that, so that is a piece, that's a good idea.
Public employee, person, it's not a employee of the county.
Actually, we have a woman who chairs the Catfish Water Creek watershed. She lives, I mean, she's certainly up to date. She's been before us, asking for what she can do. She might be a good person. Dawn, do you know whom I speak? She was here. I'm sorry?
Yeah. I think two things. So, if we're going to, if you're going to, I think, two things. The board should decide, okay, a group, and it designate from the group, like the Chamber, or like the Conservation Board, or we list it to the public, and we have, take applications. But just to, you know, I feel uncomfortable randomly having us just, you know, try to figure out who these people are, and name drop, when, one, they're not familiar with it, and, two, we're, you might be excluding others.
I do like the idea of Danny McDonald, because he was kind of involved from the start with John Deere, so he would be familiar. I like the idea of a Conservation Board member. So, that could be, that's four people, right there, if you were to choose myself and Russell.
A GDDC person and a Conservation Board, you're kind of leaning with? Is that what you're coming back? I would be comfortable with, you know, making an ovation to the Conservation Board, making an ovation to Greater Dubuque, and their staff or board, I think is what you're saying, to have a member.
I have interest, as a supervisor, in working in all phases of this, so that it can be as seamless as possible, and that it's an opportunity to, to showcase collaboration and partnership. And so, I'm happy to do that, and report back to the board, or however the board wishes to do that, defer to the chair on that. But I do think it's right out of the, it's the first request, it's being asked of us to look at the build grant, and I think that, you know, there is some discussion that maybe we didn't all feel like we were involved in, you know, as much as we might want to be in the actual application process. So, if this is a first step, or a first opportunity to be engaged, having a supervisor be there, I think, see appropriate thing to do.
So, if that were the case, we probably want to check with the city if they would provide one of their PEs, if we want to have a board member on this.
I would rather have two professional engineers than a Board of Supervisors. I appreciate our participation. We'll get that opportunity to review contracts, make final decisions on those recommendations. So, I would like to have more technical expertise from the county. But in order to move things along, I know we're not making decisions here, because we don't have them in front of us, but I'm, I'm okay with reaching out to Conservation and Greater Dubuque, if that's an idea we have. Otherwise, if we're trying to hash this out, if we're not going to solve it now, maybe we just table it, come back?
I would suggest, from what I'm hearing, maybe Anthony put together a list, and then let us decide, and I'll say this about, I think we should have some, you know, gender balance on it. So, if having Ann on the committee helps accomplish that, I'm okay with that. If we go with two county engineers, then, and you want a supervisor to have their head in the tent, I wouldn't, I would be okay with Ann serving that role. And then, I believe we have female members on the Conservation Board, that we would probably need to check with to see if they're interested. And then, is it, are, do we need to have someone? Because the city's involved in this grant as well, right? So, do we need to have somebody from the city?
You don't have to, no.
Okay, all right.
I mean, they'll be in the process. This is really more of a formal DOT request, to select the consulting firm to do the engineering work.
Yes.
And so, that's the, that's the reason for this. It doesn't mean that there'll, there'll be more or less dialogue with the city, related to the engineering components, related to their collaboration. This is just needed to select the consulting group, and the reason it's different is because it's going through different funding sources.
Yeah, this is a 100% county project. It's county-led. It's our committee. It is a part of the federal consultant selection process, and we have to have at least five members, two PEs, but, yeah, we don't have to involve the city, you know, that they were a part of the application process, but you don't have to involve them at this point.
And then, you're clear, you believe you're clear, that the DOT either mandates or prefers that we don't have three employees from the county? Is that correct?
It's, as far as I understand, and I've talked to Chandra a lot about this, it's mandated.
Mandatory. So, the dilemma is, if we choose our two E, you know, our, use our two PEs, then we, those are our representation. If we choose a supervisor, and Anthony, that's our representation.
And then, we would get an engineer from the city, and we would have a supervisor who has interests, and we have a supervisor who has skill set, and a supervisor that sits on DMATS, and works on a relationship with the Iowa DOT as well. So, I don't think it's just I'm not gender balanced completely. It is that there's interest, and I think coordinating this with the city, from my understanding and everything that I have learned through DMATS and working with ECIA, is important to do that. So, that's where I think it's important, at every step, reach out to the city and include them. That will benefit us and the overall project, and the overall likelihood that we'll have the project again. But please do come back with recommendations and names.
And Anthony, I just want to ask about your timelines. We meet again on the 13th for our regular meeting. Is that, could this, this be decided, then, at that meeting? Is that?
Yeah.
Going to, is that going to be a problem?
No, I think we can get a list of people together, hopefully, by then, and.
And then, also acknowledgement, whether or not they're willing to serve if appointed.
Right.
Okay.
One added note, kind of related around this, January 10th, at 1:00, I will be going over to District Six, Iowa DOT, for the build grant discussion, their office down in Cedar Rapids, if anybody's interested in going. This will be kind of a kickoff meeting with the DOT, just to kind of like, get some feelers on how they, they plan to proceed with us, and.
I can make that, if that's helpful.
Yep.
It's 1:00 on the 10th in Cedar Rapids?
Yes, it is.
Chair, did you wish to do that?
That would be fine. No, I, I'm fine with you doing it, Ann. Thank you.
And can I ride with you, then, Anthony? Or you will ride with me?
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
And then, if you had any DOT language on, on the role of this committee, that would be helpful, just to have in a document with some of the, if we have candidates, their names, if we have just groups of, you know, Conservation Board, one member, or Greater Dubuque Development Board, one member. That would be helpful.
So, that'll be on the January 13th agenda.
Yep.
Okay. So, I assume you'll check with the city engineer as well?
I will. I will check to see if they are, if anybody's willing to be a part of this, and I'll have them as an option for you guys to consider.
Anything else on the build grant appointment?
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Wasn't there on a similar topic to that, wasn't there a meeting with Conservation, related to the trail?
Yeah, so.
Maybe you can hit your mic. Hit your mic, otherwise, because we're recording.
All right. Brian Preston is, is, looks like he's scheduling the next Conservation Board meeting for January 23rd, so Chandra and I are planning on coming to that board meeting to discuss trail funding.
Okay, good.
Yep.
What time is that?
4:00 PM.
I'm sorry, what was that date?
January 23rd.
All right. We'll go back to our item nine one, annual appointments for Dubuque County Supervisors for 2020. So, we have a list, so nine one A, Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Commission.
If I can interject, Sheriff Kennedy, are you here for the personnel requisition as well?
Yes.
You want to take that now, and so, because I'm sure you don't want to see us hashed through our various board appointments.
All right. So noted. Item 10, Personnel Requisitions, 10A, Permanent Full-Time Administrative Assistant for Conservation.
So, I think these positions were already budgeted, and there are books that have resigned? Is that right?
One of them is a transfer, and then, the other two are resignations, yes.
Danielle is in the County Assessor's Office now, so she was previously in this role. So, and I believe the Conservation Board approved this appointment as well, right?
Do we need a motion for each one, then? Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion for 10A?
Like a motion to approve the position as an administrative assistant for Conservation.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Next up is 10B, Permanent Full-Time Naturalist for Conservation Department.
So, this was Ally's resignation. I don't know, Dawn, did you have any conversations with either the director or the naturalists related to pay, pay ranges?
I have not. We discussed it briefly last year during the budget, so anticipating that to be.
It came up again, and so, my thought is, while certainly I would like to have another naturalist for working within Conservation, I don't know if that's the accurate pay scale. And they were presenting, when I say they, the naturalists, along with the director, were presenting information to the Conservation Board related to pay ranges, similar to what we did with IT, similar to what we did with a few other departments, that it might not be in line with statewide averages.
I think it was our, the joint meeting that we had, like on the 15th, it was immediately prior to Christmas, so that discussion wouldn't have had time, I'm sure, to have her reach out to you, to have you actually look at it.
So, what I'm getting at is, should we approve this now, or should we table it, and make sure that that's, that's the range that we want to advertise with? I'd hate to approve this, go out with this, and now we come back and the ranges are changing.
Well, right now, you're just approving the recruitment process. We can work through the salary information, because you're going to have it come back again as a 7A, as an appointment, and if we want to change it, it'd be indicated at that time.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that, then. I will second that motion.
All right. The motion was made and seconded. The only thing I have is, if we start the recruitment process with this range, is that going to be?
No, I'll work with Brian and his team before we, we put it out for applications.
Well, I would want the board's approval on those number changes, and that's kind of what I'm getting at. I don't think we can approve this document and then change the numbers. I don't think that would be genuine. That wouldn't be very, it wouldn't be rational.
Not very transparent, certainly.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. You know, if the board wants these ranges, great, we can move forward, if they're comfortable with it, but that's the range, then. Would be my thought, unless the board changes that range.
I don't know what the proper range should be.
I don't either. That's what I'm saying, while, that's why I don't want, that's why I'm hesitant to approve this requisition, until we have had that discussion, unless the board has no appetite to change the ranges.
I think the changing of the range, in my experience, has taken some months, and so, I think if we wish to go ahead and get Brian and the Conservation Department and other naturalists, we need to be on that, and if there's an increase, it'll happen probably during the budget season, I would think. You know, I don't, I don't know how to predict the pay raise, when you have a staff position that's open, and that director's asking us to go forward, Jay.
Maybe we can approve the requisition with, with, without the pay range, and have that be part of the motion. Otherwise, what I, I'm kind of black and white, we approve this requisition, I don't want to see it come above 2268, or below 1815.
And I don't think we should put something out with a blank pay range. I don't think that's, I don't think that's a wise precedent to have, so either, you know, we would look to table, and get the director's input about his personnel request.
That's where I was heading.
So, shall we move to table for two weeks?
Where we have procedures.
I guess I would ask, then, if there's a motion and a second, I would ask if you're willing to withdraw your motion and second for approval, and then we could table.
Did I second it?
Unless you...
I will withdraw my second.
Okay.
Is that proper?
Draw your motion. Alright, the motion and the second are withdrawn.
Make a motion to table the personnel requisition until there's further review and conversation with the director related to pay ranges.
Okay, there's a second. Motion made and seconded to table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. Alright. Next up, Sheriff Kennedy. We have 10C, Permanent Full-Time Deputy Sheriff. You want to come forward? Okay.
We had a resignation. This deputy had been, he's had a relationship with somebody out of state, and so, they've decided to pursue that relationship, and who am I to stand in the way of love, so... He resigned right just before Christmas, and so, we're just, it's a budgeted replacement, so budgeted position, so...
And then they'd start in the jail, like most applicants.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the requisition.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the requisition, personnel requisition in 10C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Kennedy.
Thanks for bumping me up. Appreciate it.
You bet.
You're welcome.
So, do we want to save the appointments for last?
Sure.
As long as we're doing that, why don't we continue through the agenda, which is almost done, and then we can go and finish up with our appointments. Tabled and pending items, we have strategic planning. We do have a session planned.
Your next one is Monday at 2:00 PM at ECIA.
Okay.
I have it from 2:00 to 4:00.
2:00 to 4:00, correct.
Okay, I have it on my calendar.
Okay.
Do we have an expectation of how many more, or when this process will go through?
Jennifer Walker, who's been facilitating it, is just back in the office today. So, I can ask her that. She's going to provide me the updated materials for Monday's discussion today also.
I'm not in a hurry to end it. I'm just curious to what the plan and agenda is. And, you know, I know there, it's our first time doing this. If they could give us some guidance on when they think we would be through the process.
Yeah, I'll request that.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else under table and pending items? If not, we'll go to public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are of concern to that person, which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Board Chair recognizes Representative Chuck Eisenhardt.
Sisters and others came for the proclamations, one on human trafficking. And on their way out, I asked them if they had made any comments during your initial public comment period, and they said no. So, I'm kind of here in their behalf, channeling them, I suppose you would say. Our good sisters are very wise in the ways of God, not necessarily in the ways of government. Representative Lindsey James and I have introduced a bill last year related to human trafficking. In summary, what it says is state government would require a lodging facility, hotel motel, to have trained or educated their staff in recognizing the signs of human, potential human traffic on their premises, and then giving them a protocol on how they would process that with their management in terms of investigating, et cetera, et cetera. There's standard curriculum out there with this kind of training. The Sisters of Dubuque have been providing it to facilities in Dubuque. The bill would basically say that in order to get public business, have a public event there, paid for with public dollars, state dollars, or have a state employee stay there, your staff will have had this training. The bill did get a hearing. Since you talked a little bit last year, it didn't go anywhere last year. Came up kind of late. Since you have been talking recently about your own legislative priorities, I put that out there. Endorsing such a piece of legislation may be something you are interested in. I know when we've talked to the City Council and other public bodies, they not only consider public policy agendas that include their own interest as an organization, but sometimes they will endorse legislation that other organizations in the community have that you are sympathetic to. The other option that may be out there for longer-term consideration is the Board of Supervisors adopting similar policy for itself in terms of, we want to stay at, and any events or meetings that we host should be held at facilities that have had this type of training, kind of lead-by-example type thing. So, that's a piece of legislation Representative James and I have been working on. The sisters that you had before you earlier today have been taking the lead in that, and they, in fact, inspired us to introduce that. So, in the future, if you want to do something tangible to follow up on your resolution for today, I present that to you as an option.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck. Alright, is there anyone else to speak under public comments? If not, I'm going to ask for a brief recess before we get started with our committee appointments. Five minutes?
I will make a motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five-minute recess. And, I'll wait till she takes us on. The Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, and it is 11:02 AM. And we're going back to item, Agenda Item 9-1, Annual Appointments for Dubuque County Supervisors for 2020. We have, I think everybody has a list of what we're currently appointed to.
Right there.
So, unless somebody wants to make a general comment?
Well, I think the annual appointments that are currently reflected, I think there's one that Anthony and I had talked to Dawn about that we might want to look at. That one, Dawn, is this the time to do that? So, the DMATS, so Dubuque Metropolitan Area Study, the RPA Committee, it says Jay. And the DMATS minutes reflect, I'm actually Vice Chair of that. So, you're on DMATS' agenda as the RTA representative to DMATS. So...
You got RPA Policy Committee.
Right.
The regional, so there's the...
There's a technical, which is Anthony, the engineering.
Sure.
And then there's the policy, and we both have...
Regional Planning Authority is different than DMATS. That's why I'm confused by that wording, but...
Well, there's ECIA Regional Planning Affiliation. That's a different one. I'm looking at the DMATS.
Are we on the right one? Which line? I don't know. Are you looking at number nine, or are you...
Well, none of mine are numbered, so...
They're numbered up there, so I'm just, yeah, I don't...
Alright, numbered up there.
Just trying to be on the same page.
Yes, number nine. I serve on that committee, and I'm the Vice Chair of that. Roy Buhl serves as the Chair.
Of DMATS?
Yes.
Okay.
And then when you go drop down to the bottom, you'll see, I don't know whatever number it is, probably 22? Oh, 27. Regional Transit Authority, they also have a representative on DMATS, and they minutes reflect that you're the representative of the RTA to DMATS. So, I guess this is the day to clarify who's the who and what's the what, so that the minutes start to reflect that.
Well, the RTA would make that appointment. Is that correct? Not us. No, the board, the RTA Board, by the bylaws, all three supervisors are on that. But, the appointment to DMATS would be made by the RTA Board. Is that correct?
And we all serve on that board. I think it's, I think that's one we're all appointed to.
Yeah, so I guess I'm not sure what you're, so you have a question there, or a direction?
Well, I'm just trying to make the list that we're going to work from be reflective of what the current status is, so that the...
I believe it's correct, as if that's what you're saying. What, you have a question, or I'm not sure what...
Number nine should be Ann McDonough. Can someone go back to nine?
I don't have this numbered one. Is that...
I know, they're not numbered on our sheet.
9A is similar to this. It's just not, it's not in Excel.
I mean, all...
So, nine should be you. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
So, study RP. RPA is different than DMATS as well.
Just had this conversation with Anthony.
I'm happy if you are asking for that appointment. If you want to have that appointment, that's...
Well, I'm the Vice Chair of that.
See, keep in mind, we get, yeah, I don't dispute that. Unless you have a firm direction, I would probably recommend getting Chandra and ECIA involved, because you've got DMATS, you've got RPA, and then you have appointment to DMATS from RTA.
And that's you. I'm telling you what the DMATS minutes say, and I just confirmed that with Anthony.
Okay.
And you are listed as the RTA representative, but you're not listed as a member of the RTA Board on this document. But on number nine, that's something that I serve on. But you also attend those meetings, or have been the last some.
Okay.
So, we just have to be clear who we are. And you're saying you serve on DMATS under what capacity? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, in the past, it was I was the appointment from RTA, the Regional Transit Authority. I was that appointment.
Right.
I don't know if that expires every year or not, and so...
Yeah, I don't know either.
That's what I'm saying. I don't, I think we probably would want to get ECIA and Chandra to help clarify some of these. I, yeah, I'll go back. I'm not sure if you're just, you're trying to learn like I am, or if you have a direction?
I think that, based upon, Dawn, the conversation we just had with Anthony, right? The position of number nine, the current appointment is Ann McDonough.
So, you're saying this is incorrect?
This is incorrect. This should be Ann McDonough, not Jay Wickham.
And is that the same as on our Agenda Item 9-1T?
Have you ever been to a regional planning meeting, an RPA? Well, the RPA is different than DMATS.
Well, there's ECIA Regional Planning Affiliation. I'm on that, but I cannot make those, so the alternate is serving. Those are done, those are at the same time as the Regional Governing Board for the mental health. So, Dave, you've been covering those.
I have been covering those as the alternate.
As the alternate. So, we'll need to reflect that today as well, but...
And if you...
I mean, if you're recommending you put your name in there, I'm comfortable with that, if that's what we're at. If you feel it's incorrect, or you want to serve, if either one of those is true, you're, I'm okay with that being modified.
Let's just make that correction, and then as we go through this, I guess we will, you know, determine for the RTA if that's also, I think you should be appointed to that. You're on, I think you're listed as, all of us are supposed to do that somewhere, isn't that also? So, I would say that on that, again, just to try to make this be reflective, yeah, the RTA should be all.
Yeah, that's what their bylaws state.
Okay. So, then I think that this is an accurate reflection of what we've currently been doing. It does have you listed as the DRA representative.
And I was never appointed to that.
And so, that's one that we probably need also today. I think if we want to go back up to that one, the Racing Association, again, it's got your name, but...
Yeah, I've never been appointed to that. I had, the board discussed it, and then I had conditions, and I spoke with the President of the RTA. I spoke with the Great Dolphin, the Chair, and I spoke with Rick Dickinson as well.
So, that one should be reflected as open currently?
I think that would be accurate.
Okay. So, I think that that, I think that reflects what we've been doing for the past year. Would you agree, Dave?
Yes.
I think there's still a miss on the DMATS and RPA stuff, but that's fine. We'll let somebody, we'll let that be confirmed. Because I've had multiple conversations with Chandra on this, and I was confused as well. And he was stating, no, I have been and should have been appointed in there, but we'll let it stand as is, and just maybe as a mental note to circle out and verify all these when we're done.
Right. Right. And that's great. Maybe you can...
Can we circle back then to our agenda, and kind of go down with the adjustment or correction? 9-1A, Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Commission, believe Ann?
I've been serving on that, and I'm fine to stay. I'm not looking to make any changes, other than we need to formally change the, where you've been stepping in as an alternate, the ECIA Planning Committee. But otherwise, I think they're all... So, I guess for 7, 9-1A, the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Commission, that will remain me.
Okay. CEO Workforce Development, I...
How do you want to handle these chairs? Do you want to clean up the lists and have consensus, and then we agree on it, or do you want to do one by one?
I think we should do one by one.
Okay, okay. So, I'm currently serving on the CEO Workforce Development.
Maybe we're going to go one by one. I'll make a motion to have Supervisor McDonough appointed to the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Commission for the year 2020. Okay. I'm with you on that. I just, I asked the question, and you said one by one, and so, that's why I was going through that. Okay, have a motion proven. Sounds good. I'm cool with that.
Alright, so it sounds like we have consensus on Ann serving on, continue to serve on Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Commission. The CEO Workforce Development under 1B, 9-1B. I am currently on that. We're in a big transition stage. I'm willing to continue to serve on that, on that board.
That's in flux, isn't it? Is that the one that's in flux?
I provided you with information. We're going to have a work session at the next meeting, so I'd ask you to, I know you're not all paper people like I am, but you'll need that for the next meeting.
Well, I was at the District 6 meeting.
Yeah.
Where it was discussed.
Right.
And I thought it was more, we should discuss that it was concerning.
Yes, so that's why I've asked for a work session, so. But as far as serving on that, I'm willing to continue to serve on that.
Okay. C is the Advisory Committee. I currently serve on that, and I have not made a meeting.
Can we remove that one?
Well, I asked them, and they did check their 28E, they checked their bylaws, and I can find a designee. But I don't have a designee to give us, so I'm assuming we should just, I'll stay on it, and I'll continue to look for somebody, and we'll come back to it.
Did, I think you made the comment, and I, you know, I'm on the other board, Convention Visitors Board, and I've never been familiar or heard of the Advisory Committee. So, that would be, going back to my point, can we just remove it?
Well, Dave...
To our discretion.
I asked them, I asked Travel Dubuque about it.
I'm not, I would ask my supervisors, would you like to remove it? I would like to remove it, remove our appointment to this.
But then it will be, as a whole, it will be an open position for them.
It, that's just my opinion, so if you don't want to, then I understand that.
I don't want it to be in a position where we're not, we're not going to appoint, but we're not going to have a designee. I'm in communication with them right now.
Okay, so you prefer to stay open and active?
I'd like to find a designee. I cannot make these meetings, because they change them all the time. And I know you and, they do not meet on a regular rotation.
And as a person on the bigger board, the Convention Visitors whole board, I'm unaware of what the Advisory Committee does.
Yes.
And in any of its values. Or any of its values, so that's kind of, that's why, get back to my colleagues, I'd say, do we want to serve on that? Do we need to? Do we want to?
I was approaching Kevin, I'm going to say Katz from the Fair Board, the Fair. He's the Director of the Fair. And he serves on this Advisory Committee, because I was looking for him to be my designee. I'm like, perfect for you.
Maybe my bigger question is, does the board want to have a member and have this be on future boards' agenda to have a supervisor appointed to this Advisory Committee? My opinion would be no. It doesn't seem to fit the function, and we already have a designee on the larger Board of Directors. But, but that's, I'm that designee, but if either of you two would like to serve on that, or have the authority to appoint another person as our designee, I'm open to that. But I would like to remove our participation from that.
I think until I'm not perceived as an empty seat, I would like to see this through and get them a designation, a designee, we will confirm that, and then we can remove it from our schedule of things we do. But I feel like we're, we're leaving them in a, in a bad position, too. They have a spot, they think it's me, I can't get there. Let's try to tidy it up, I think, and I will continue to look for a designee, and I will try to make the meetings until I can get that to happen. So I'm open to suggestions of someone who might benefit by being more engaged in Travel Dubuque.
I would say maybe we leave it on for this go-round, and hopefully we can come up with somebody, non-supervisor, to fill that role, and then next year we won't have to.
I mean, Kevin was saying to me, the Fair, it's a great thing to be involved in, and it's really raised the profile of the Fair, for him, it's been very helpful.
Yeah, not disputing that, I'm just, I guess, debating whether we should be the one involved in appointing people and doing this. But apparently there must be value that you see.
No, I, I mean, I can, I will, I can communicate to them that they can find me a designee, but I just don't want to leave it right now, it looks like we just don't care enough to show up. That's not a, that's a bad taste, that's not true or accurate, but.
Not what I'm recommending.
I don't know how to communicate it, and, if you want to write that memo, I guess.
I, I guess what I would do is I'd make a motion to remove our appointment from the Convention Visitors Bureau Advisory Committee as a supervisor. That would be my motion, to remove our participation in appointing or serving on that Advisory Committee.
With, with that motion, are you?
Well, I'm going to second it for discussion, let's, let's go there and see what this sounds like.
Second it, we're open for discussion.
Yeah, so I mean, I, my general vantage point is this board supervisor should see where their advocacy, their expertise lie, and then where they can best serve. And, and we would tell those boards, we will, will or will not be serving, or will or will not be appointing, not the reverse. Unless it's statutory required, some of these are by code, that we do require, so that's where I'm coming from, that type of approach. That said, I love the, you know, Convention Visitors Bureau, because I'm on that other board, and I'm really happy on it, happy to continue to serve in that capacity. And I was unaware of the details of the Advisory Committee.
So, Dawn, what if, we need to have some formal communication, I think, to the Travel Dubuque folks about participation on the Advisory Committee? And I think we could say that we will no longer be appointing a supervisor to that position, if they choose to look for a designee, they should inform us, otherwise, what?
I would say everything you said, but the last part, my motion is that we're not involved with it. Well, it'd become, I mean, obviously, if it's approved, you know, my motion and second, and if it's approved, then, yeah, that's part of our minutes, part of the notice, and then, yeah, you can, they can either read the minutes or send a letter of recommendation to them.
We just need to conclude this discussion with them, because it's been, you know, ongoing.
All right, so with that, and you, nobody thinks that we should try to find a?
I don't feel it's our role as supervisors to find a member of the Advisory Committee, I don't feel it has a level of importance.
Okay.
I do feel it's very important that we serve on the Board of Directors, of which I am on. Is that clear?
I also.
I mean, there's a lot of Advisory Boards out there, we could be, this list could be a hundred long.
And I'm also saying, we have enough of our own committees and our own commissions that are open, that I'd like to be finding people for, with the same amount of energy.
Now we're on the same page, and that's why, you know, we're serving on the Board of Directors.
But I would like, I would like that letter to say that it's a board decision, that we're not appointing any supervisor at this time.
Exactly what's happening, that was my motion, and the second was for that.
There was a second, is there any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry three zero.
All right.
Thank you.
D, nine, one, D, Convention Visitors Bureau Board of Directors.
I'm happy to continue serving on that.
Okay.
Otherwise known as Travel Dubuque.
All right. Nine, one, E, Courthouse Security Committee, I have served on that, I'm comfortable continuing.
Happy you're doing that, if you'd like to.
F, nine, one, F, Dubuque Area Transportation Study Policy Committee Board of Directors.
I'm happy to continue to serve on that.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yep. Nine, one, G, Dubuque Chamber Board of Directors.
I currently serve on that and happy to continue.
Okay.
And they did change their bylaws, so it didn't reflect just the Chair or other ones, so, God bless, out of all the boards and commissions I've made recommendations to, the Chamber took them. So I was very happy to report that, all the other boards were not interested in any of my changes, but the Chamber was.
All right. Nine, one, H, Dubuque County Early Childhood.
I'm on that board as well. There'll be another funding request for them coming up, and I'll feel strongly about that, and.
Do you want to remain on the, would you like to remain on the board? As the board appointment?
If, if we continue to fund Dubuque County Early Childhood, I think it's important the supervisor be on that board. And I'm happy to be that representative, unless somebody else would like to jump in. But without funding, I don't think it merits the importance to be on that board. It's not required by code, it's not an operating unit, and there, so maybe we could table that one? I think they also go June to July as well, it's just another odd thing, some of these, some of their bylaws, like even greater Dubuques, are June to July.
Yeah, this one is actually, they, they have the potential to be impacted by what Operation New View does in a merger. Some of the same funding streams are there. So that could all be in flux, early childhood.
You have motion, you want to table that?
I, I would table it until budget. So either table or just list it as open, maybe list it as open.
And your, your point is that if we don't approve funding, then?
I would like to know my colleagues' interest in this board and what they do. And so that'd be a further discussion towards budget time.
Open, perhaps?
Yeah, I think open would be what I would be listing.
Okay. All right. Nine, one, I, Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency.
King of the landfill.
Yeah.
Who serves on that?
I am on that, and I'm okay continuing to do that.
I have interest in learning about this, but I don't have any time to be on any other commissions or boards. So if you want to do it for another year, Dave, just know that I, I don't know anything about this. I mean, I know they've been here, and they've presented, and I've been down at some meetings, but I think there's greater issues there that I'd like to personally know about.
They bury garbage for money, that's all you need to say.
Two things that you, there's, there's a couple things you don't want to be on the Board of Supervisors when they look for a new landfill.
I understand that, so you're putting your time in now, right?
Luckily, we're a long ways out, so.
Another hundred years.
Yeah, so I, I will, I would continue to serve on that if that's. So nine, one, J, DRA, that's open.
That's the Racing Association.
Do you want to talk more about that at all, or? So, we had discussions about that, and I think, I think all three of us had our brief shot. And I had two conditions that I expressed to, to that board. One, to be placed on the Executive Board, and then two, to give considerations related to their distribution as an agenda topic. Both of those were denied, and the, the, the issue was dropped.
And you were appointed and, and ended up turning it down.
Right.
You, you were appointed last year, here's, here's where I'm at, and then I think this is the first time I've said this publicly. I may be willing to do this, but I'm not willing to take it for what could potentially be one year. So depending on how my campaign for reelection turns out, and this isn't political, I would be interested if I'm reelected. But I'm not going to, I don't think it's fair to go through that for, potentially for one year, so that's.
I mean, the DRA does wonderful things, and they run a really good organization, and that's what I mentioned to the group, is that I don't, didn't feel or think that they needed necessarily me to help them.
Yeah.
But we had some conversation, and it, it, it didn't go any further, so I'm okay if it's still open then.
So my, my answer for this year is, you know, I'm not willing to do it this year, next year, if I'm on the board, I won't be the Chair, and I'll have some additional time. And I would think, I would give it good consideration, but not this year.
Supervisor McDonough, any change in that position, to keep from open, or would you like to fill it?
President Trump could not serve on this commission, under their current guidelines.
Okay, all right.
So I think that, you know, the Iowa Racing Gaming Association, you know, I mean, if they want us, then they're going to need to have us be in a different position. I agree with you, Jay, it's open.
Okay.
And it's, I mean, I, it's a lot of reading of grants, I do that already, plenty of reading of grants to do, so I'm not interested in this position.
Okay, it's open. Nine, one, K, ECIA Board of Directors, one and one alternate. I believe I serve in that.
I think I'm your alternate.
I'm on ECIA Business Growth, so you can't be on both of those boards.
Right.
I'm your alternate, and I've never been asked to do anything, which is fine.
I've, and I've made almost all of those meetings.
So we're going to keep those appointments, and K will continue to be Baker McDonough?
Right. And then ECIA Business Growth is Wickham.
Wickham.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Nine, one, one is?
That's me.
Chair.
First Judicial District Department of Correctional Services Board of Directors, one and an alternate.
That is, that is me, I don't know if we have an alternate, but I'm.
Alternate.
Okay, you're the alternate, and that is actually mandated by the code, State of Iowa, that Board of Supervisors sit on that board, so it's one of the few code mandated ones, so.
And is Wickham McDonough?
I'm fine with that, unless somebody else would like to switch.
O is GDDC Board of Directors, I'm currently serving, be interested in continuing to do so.
So O continues to be Chair Baker.
I'm fine with that.
Nine, one, P, Dubuque County Emergency Management Commission, that's me, and I'm willing to continue serving. Q, nine, one, Q, the MHDS East Central Region Governing Board.
There's something there I just would like to bring my colleagues just up to speed. Lynn County is, has a significant budget shortfall with their access center, like 1.4 million, and they are rattling that they are going to try to get out of the region. So, major shakeup, hanging out there, we're not the only region that's having this issue come, but it's not good, and.
Are, are you still okay serving on that?
I, I am, again, I'm open to either one of you to, to continue to do that, and I've asked the group that I kind of work with, kind of informally. Stella and Dawn have been on that committee looking at bids, prospects, I mean, we're taking steps backward on this whole process, it's getting more, I have asked the, I have asked that subacute funding be placed in the regional board, the regional budget, just like access, you know, Lynn County's trying to get their share of access center funding. I'm saying, well, why don't we get some regional subacute funding, so, which may be why they're kind of doing an ultimatum, I have no idea, but, so, I'm happy to continue to serve, it just.
Sounds like more issues.
North Iowa Juvenile Detention Center Board of Directors.
And I also serve on that, and I'm happy to do that, those are, I just would point out to my colleagues, those are three traveling commitments. But they're interesting, and I'm happy to do it.
Okay. Nine, one, S, Operation New View Board of Directors, two, currently Baker McDonough. Or McDonough Baker, however you want to phrase it, Supervisor Wickham, you clamoring to get on that board?
Didn't feel real welcoming the last time I was at that meeting.
No, at this point, they're picking their poison between you and you, Jay.
That's right.
Between me and you, they would, they don't know who they'd rather have, me or you, so, but.
And they don't get, they don't get the pick.
But here's the thing, Operation New View Board of Directors, that, that is the one, I honestly have a difference of opinion with you both on the requirement of posting their agenda and a quorum notice. Because you can't say, the last meeting, I was personally attacked in a confidential setting for things that have happened here. So you can't say that what goes on there isn't Dubuque County business, it is, we should have quorum notice because there's a quorum there. So it puts it in a difficult position for me to be remaining on that board when I asked Dawn to post quorum notice and was told in email that it wasn't allowed.
Yeah, well, we, we asked our county attorney, so that's, that's all I know.
Not to rule on Operation New View.
I'm happy if you want to give another opinion from the county attorney, so I'm not.
Shall we get him, his opinion on Operation New View?
I wouldn't necessarily want to do that today at this minute, I would like to see.
No, 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 agreed, of course.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
But if we could get a ruling on that.
I think he already has, and he said that we didn't have to post, but if you want to go through it again with maybe more specific detail on Operation New View, that might shed some light, I'm open to that. I'm not interested at this point in serving on that board, so.
We need to have two to protect the county's interests.
I'm willing to continue to serve, Anne, are you willing to continue to serve?
I will continue to serve, but I need a county attorney's opinion specific to the quorum notice on this.
Understand.
Yeah, that's good, I think that's, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Nine, one, T, ECIA Regional Planning Affiliation, one and one alternate.
So, maybe Chandra. We, we have a question on what boards I'm on and what Supervisor McDonough is on, and we'll test your memory. Okay. The Regional Planning Board, which, so maybe, maybe for easy stuff, number 23 is ECIA Regional Planning Affiliation. Does that look accurate? Okay. Okay, so that, that was where that came in, okay?
Now, on this one currently before us, I cannot attend those meetings because they are always on the day that I travel to Cedar Rapids for the Mental Health Board, right? So Chair Baker's been taking that spot as the alternate, so we should change this one to accurately reflect.
Okay, so you want to flip-flop you and I on that?
Well, I don't know that I can ever be the, I, I don't know that I can be the alternate either, I mean.
I want Baker Wickham.
You want to be the lead and I'll be the alternate, now is that allowed? Because I'm, I'm, I'm the RTA rep on that, too, so I can't serve double duty, right? So that's the dilemma. But the RTA is going to select another representative, aren't they? At January meeting, so if they didn't, if I wasn't that person, then I could be on this as an alternative, I just can't wear two hats. So you want to, sake of, just, I'll be on this, and then I'll get rid of the RTA part.
All right.
Appoint somebody else, you're going to put a mental noise, and I'll be the alternative.
And I'd be willing to accept this.
Okay, so we got.
Because it's, you know.
So this is going to be Baker Wickham alternate?
Baker Wickham.
Yeah. I'm the alternate. All right.
Okay. U, nine, one, U, Resource Enhancement Committee, this is REAP, is that right? Chair, I'm willing to continue to serve in that. And I think that's everybody, right, is, yeah.
What it's been turning out to be is we're all present at those, there, there's only one REAP meeting a year, right?
Right.
Typically, and so, I've been to every. Typically, and so, I've been to every one of them. Keep it as chair, I'm fine with that, yeah. I mean, there's, you know, Dawn, I don't know if you've researched, is this a requirement from the state that the chair be the person? Do you know, or? Because sometimes we can just clean up this language, you know, you've got, you know, just, it just was designated the chair a long time ago, so it just keeps going, where the others weren't. So that'd be my part, if it's not state code, you remove the chair, and then, not saying, not saying you would be removed, but the, the designee that the chair always has to do that. So, okay, good enough, we'll be moving. All right, good enough.
Urban County Coalition is nine one V.
That's me, I've actually grown to enjoy that.
Okay.
It works really well, it's a lot of the same supervisors from the mental health region, so there's good working relationships developing.
And I'd like it just to show that in Anne's absence, Baker or Wickham may fill in.
And I'm on some of those calls sometimes quiet, silent.
How am I doing?
I am as well, you do fine. But I think we all have an interest in it.
Not all of them.
So I think, I think having Anne is our lead, and then alternates, I think, both of us.
Well, I'll continue to be the representative, and you are there as interested parties, not my supervisors.
Right. Unless in your absence, you ask one of us to fill in. All right. Nine one W, Area Council of Governments, that's all.
What is that?
That's COG, Council of Governments, but I'm not sure, I don't think, in my three years, we have never had a meeting, I don't...
Can we eliminate it?
I think we want to be involved in it.
But there is...
I don't think it's an entity. I, I don't know what it is.
Well, let's find out what it is, shall we?
I think we have, I think it's, I think it's an old, it's, yeah.
So is it duplicate?
That's my thought, it's, just keeps going on year after year, stays on there.
Can we combine it with, like, put it in, under ECIA, the ECIA?
Just strike it, just get rid of it.
Yeah, is there a motion to remove it?
I'll make a motion to remove the Area Council of Governments from our list of appointments.
I'll second that, as long as, Chandra, you're, we're not stepping in.
Yeah, I think that's the same.
Very good, thank you.
All right. All in favor of removing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero. All right, X, nine one X, Regional Transportation Agency, RTA, that's all, that's a 2080, so...
It's all on us.
All right?
So this, on the eighth, for DMATS, excuse me, no, on the eighth for RTA, the, they're also kicking off the hydrology study from the county at 10 o'clock in the morning, so, but Dave and I were saying that RTA meetings extended, it's the strategic planning, it's a longer meeting. Because we canceled the last meeting. So I'm coming to RTA, but it's a, a conflict of some sorts. Well, I'm, I'm planning to go to the RTA meeting, I don't know, Dave, what you want to do.
I, I wanted, I mean, I, I was going to go to the RTA meeting, but I also want to attend the hydrology meeting, so...
Needless to say, if we're talking about boards, is there any interest in making a recommendation from the Board of Supervisors to, to change the RTA structure? That's a proposal I threw out a year or so ago, any renewed interest in that?
I, I don't honestly, Supervisor Wickham, in part because of the Operation New View, it's the same people, and I guess I, I would rather not make too much change too fast.
I don't, I don't think it'll get any legs, based on the previous discussion, so I think we just leave it, kind of continue the way it is, so...
First phone call?
Are we meeting at 9:30, and how long will that meeting last? Oh, it's not the planning session?
No, because...
Okay, all right.
So we're just going to go through it, kind of, yep.
All right.
Okay, that's good, I'll be there.
I as well.
I will not be.
Okay. All right, I think we're through the list.
What do you think, Dawn, does it look like we're done? Does it look like we're complete?
We need a motion to recess.
To approve.
Well, let me, let me throw one more question, is there any other boards out there that we should be on, that we'd want to make a, you know, since we're discussing our boards and activities, that we, we should be on, or you'd like to be on?
You know, there's, there are some community things that, things such as the Dream Center, Fountain of Youth.
It'd be a request, I'm just throwing it out since we have this time.
Jail diversion.
Yeah.
I mean, there's something that, I mean, I try to attend as, I think do you, Dave, as many of the Subcommittee for the Opioid Response Team meetings that we can, which are Subcommittee levels, I mean, there's obviously lots of other things that certainly we're working on, but I, I don't have a suggestion of anybody that we want to raise to this level, or we have to, you know, monitor it or have direct involvement. Do you know of any, Jay?
I, I think if we have...
Off the top of my head, no.
Yeah, if we have, I would say, significant, you know, financial investment, then I think, you know, that's something that we should look at anyway, or at least have discussion on.
What about, like, for example, DMATS, or not DMATS, Dubuque Metropolitan Solid Waste, going from three, three to five, something like that, is that of, any interest? That would be one, when you mentioned financial significance, that's about a $5 million operation.
Are you increasing the number of board members from three to five?
Yeah, yeah, or making a change, that would be an addition, I think, you know, right now it's two, two from the city, one from the county, and changing it to five would be a different ratio, some sort, but just throwing, that would be one that comes to mind. Operation New View's board overall, I've made recommendations to change that as well, but we already have, you know, two, two reps on that.
And there are things in the works, matter of fact, there's a meeting tomorrow regarding the possible merger with another entity, and...
What meeting tomorrow?
I believe, it's tomorrow at 1:00, for the Transition Committee.
I'm assuming that notice will show up in my mailbox shortly.
Because they're, they're financially considered, so they're just more ideas, but I don't come with a, a hard agenda on those, just thought I'd throw it out, so obviously we have the list of what we're included on, but if there's any other opportunities, I'd be open to those discussions.
Okay.
Could we stay on the topic of the 1:00 meeting tomorrow?
Sure.
For Operation New View, what's happening? Is that on our agenda today? Are we going to be talking about it?
I think we do have...
It says agenda of board day.
Yeah, maybe we can talk about these, these times and scheduling during our boards and commissions section.
Oh, it is, it's on, at 12:30.
Yeah.
Let's leave it for that, then.
Let's do it, we'll stay.
Okay, I think we're good.
Well, we've got recorder Murphy, if we can roll right into...
I want to approve the appointments.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the appointments for 2020, as presented on the screen there, and communicated in the last half hour.
Have you been updating the screen?
No, I haven't yet.
Okay.
I want to remove myself. Okay, as discussed, I will move the reference to the screen.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carried, three zero. All right, I think...
Make a motion to recess.
Okay.
She needs to turn off the recorder, right?
Okay. Motion recess, second. How long are we, just for a minute here, or?
Yes.
Okay. Recorder Murphy, you're going to be up here.
All in, no, you didn't vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.